Begin with the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To your republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You will call when you're ready.
Hi, Kenny.
Joe Root.
President.
Mike Reeder.
Present.
Yes, Lord.
Mike.
Present. You have copies of the minutes from the meeting of August sixteenth, twenty twenty-one?
I don't know if it's a thing of minutes or presented.
Motion by ten, second by. Ready? Roll call.
Joe Root.
Aye.
Mike Reeder.
Aye.
Rick Henry.
Aye.
Ed Burman.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye. We have any public participation tonight? I don't believe so. Andrew, you're up.
Uh, really just to report, just, uh, I mean, the people that they are definitely in the midst. In the whole platform there, so. Uh, so with that. There is more than you.
Do you have a written report from Space, the events? It's not an office. Is there anything else from Space?
No, but, um, we do need the, uh, to go through this, um, board does have that according to the state work accounts. We have to give it the minutes and we need to go through this process to be manual entries into, um, for the state work accounts.
Did I hear a motion that we have, uh, put this as a document into the minutes, official minutes of this? Second. Roll.
Who made us? This is my thing or is this?
Yeah, it'll be a one by.
Okay, roll call.
Three minute.
Mike Reeder.
Aye.
Joe Root.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Todd.
Aye.
Just make sure that it's one of the documents in there. Anything else, Todd?
No.
Bill?
I reported the last day of this underground property two months after the bell. We had come in, come in the board, the two sessions went bad. Then we put it in the board, the two sessions failed out. It was all same age cables and other things, but, uh, uh, it's been all over and the cables been put in and then pressed hold. So. And then the four line grew up, these chain out, the fours. And the same things, miles. Uh, well, on crew, James crew completed the three face primary extension, uh, headline road, west, two hundred west. And then, uh, you notice down the end, the different personnel coming from. So the patient were over here. Before us, and then just ask people just spur of the pot. We see how this was. And then last month, month of August, we had twenty-five villages. Now twenty-five, one two likely. Seven were being spurs, three raccoons, over, uh, five duty, under, four duty trees. And the four that's now with powers up. It's a four call smart, I found the truth. I probably have the roles and figures first.
I'm sure. Any questions or comments for Todd? Go away, I won't be trying to see what it is. It's about to. Shane?
Yep.
Got questions for us tonight?
There's that, sir. Um, there might be. I think you've told me. The city service, the city itself. I hope that, uh, we wanted to discuss. Two of us, so we wanted to open the, the state of the system. Yes, since I can say that we work on. Again, I want you, everyone here wants to. We're, we're sticking to the.
The issues of with equipment, does it hinder the production in any way?
There's kind of different ways in particular, yeah, stuff to capture for it, so. I do have. One with your. It's a useful one, I suggest, the crisis. Um, I just need to use it to, um, financials. Very. I don't have, I didn't, I didn't see it, so. I remember that. One thing that worked on. Essentially, there was just a company in finance, something like, so it was like. Just where. It's not a form of something. It's not. Yeah, we look back at something, it just like. They have been in the.
Shane?
Even about how old this server was, that, you know, second. I was talking to, to trust that someone invited. For this to be to get. And the servers is essentially, they're named for a special computer business. It's like my computer own works to organize. Some of it is not really in real life, it's on, uh, green light. In this.
I have one related request, and I have talked to the board about this. Let me ask this, Todd, since you were, you, uh, could you two work together? What I'd like to give toward is a, we're calling it a notification to management. What I'm giving them is, we're going to have things. Uh, pick up or go out for days at a time. We're great, I would tell you people who Shane definitely can fix it. And it seems like this case, we got out of our way. But I think what might be lacking a little bit is just the communication about that problem, right? What's impacted? And who, who's working on it? So in the business world, we would have, we would put out a notification to management, not just a simple, be a text message. It was three questions. What's involved? Who's, who's got the lead or who's working on it? And who do you contact?
And who is wanting to go to the board?
Well, um, first of all, we have to think about who are the impact individuals.
Oh, they're today, oh, we know who they are.
Well, and so I think it's, it's kind of a conversation, I mean, off communication. Let's say several city employees call up the panic and, hey, my boy, my, my internet phone is down. I don't get internet in my office anymore. Can't deal on this database, I can't do my stuff. Well, that's, we'll see.
Well, part of what you're, where you're going, though, too, we're, we said it's up, because we, we only have our cell phone. Because when these things crash, it takes everything with it. We could, you know, or they could.
You know, actually, but you can't use our system.
No, well, we will take the city utility for us, but the city wants it.
Typically, right?
Yeah.
So what I'm asking you to think about is what would the process look like? If we sketched out a notification management process? And you're right, we'd be using our personal cell phones instead of text messaging. Might only be three key people in the city. Maybe it's the mayor, the perpetrator, and one other individual. And that's the, that's the contact.
Yeah, well, and I was a constant contact that last week, every day, we had, we had a discussion every day. None of these one.
If, if it's okay, if you guys think about what that might look like, and what would be the impact? Because.
Absolutely.
I'm in the middle of eating dinner last night, and I asked a little bit, particularly with the grill. And that's what we tried, and my wife says, so, we're going to ask the board meeting, what's going on with internet being down, the phone's not working? I said, what are you talking about? She says, what's all the Facebook? I said, well, we've not heard of it. So it just points to the fact that I'd like for us to be a little closer to knowing when things happen, what nature of the problem is.
So, but, Doc, my original question is, so the board needs to be notified.
I think board members.
Okay.
Just, it's so easy, you worry about your phone users.
Okay.
Maybe a couple of individuals in the city, certainly department heads and employees. It's mainly listed, well, fifteen people.
Yeah, we'll work on that.
And important to me would be, you know, if the internet connection is down. I know the effects of waiting phones. You have a DNS, you have a server that among other things has the, uh, domain name server, uh, database, right? So at that point, pull this test back. So I think part of this is just here is what is impacted primarily. This email, just however. Maybe it's internet and voice over internet, or all phones, and however. If we had checkups, or we could say, here's the three things impacting, or four things impacting. So we know a little bit more about what, how big a problem is. That way, if we're called, or we run across, you know, Facebook page, we know a little bit about it, so.
Well, let me give you some advice, you see on Facebook. That just creates trouble.
I would, uh, undo that.
Okay.
So if you could please think about that?
Yeah, we will, that's fine, we can, we can work on that.
Talk about next meeting. I think what we did, what you're doing, is I have sort of the right thing to do, totally can do. A little better education, like, you know, that's what this is, yes, you know.
Okay.
Who, who owns this?
Both city and you two, that's the.
Basically, we've, we've got. It's, the server's. City's got, uh, so we've got servers. I think the question I understood when you asked is, who bought it? Who's going to pay for the new one?
Right now, the city's paying for half of it. They weren't paying for half of it. Judy and Carol both assured me that they're paying for half of the split. Without, without interest.
So what's on their, like, day, if we provide ten thousands, seven hundred dollars?
And they, they admitted that they're paying for half, so if we get, we get that in the morning, we should have for half.
And.
Which I was figuring it was going to be like full and deep, but it wasn't, they offered it up, so.
It just, my job. I mean, it's just like a system box, where you use. Hi, I didn't ask for one, it's one of the. I mean, so I didn't, I mean, I offered, it was very clear. So we've got. The host. We should have been three certain, three certain. I definitely went down the. And we got two, we had problems with those two, so. We, uh, but then for some friends to see us, we can call them. Try and stay out, we should have been here first, and we get a second vote. So the goal was. When we get one circuit session, we can spread the word, I'm positive.
One, we've been working for six weeks, that's what we're doing, as far as, as opposed to, we can't imagine what will happen today. So, but we're breaking the real project.
I may, but state factory, the G ones. Any other comments or questions for Shane? Thank you, Shane.
President's latest, totally first. People invited a motion for the day tomorrow. Well, Ken, I apologize, I'm, uh, the guy that knew, actually something like that. It's out, we should be invited to Facebook. So that'll start tomorrow, a few of the guys will come back, we're going to go through some backing, like East Tower, plant. Uh, the question station, nine sixty-five is working now. Two, those stations, so that makes one guy for a week. Up there, randomly pushing. Me and Sky's got a few service leads, they've been working on them the last two weeks. Uh, Peter changed out, we, for that. There's a meeting Thursday, so we can get a, a pair of, okay. On the water tower, I think it says, it's been formed by, in August, or actually, in August. It's behind schedule, and there are two, uh, orders.
It's a good one.
Yeah, let's start.
Dirt front.
So I have a question, uh, to, um. Our experience with Tyler has kind of been, if not squeaky wheel, you know, completely. Response. Are you the person of meters, from, it might be to the ladies, from who?
I am, but to me, my office, the building office, I've been, I've been living in it all the evening, so. She's been here, that was, I'm trying to get response, I have a project manager, which was who paid the best, essentially, we're seeing. Two thirty-five hundred dollar planes came through to the back. This, first one was April, the second one was maybe in June or something. Maybe I haven't really got much out of the second one, I hope for June, so.
So we, we paid for the service and then that was the first.
Sure. The same, something like a. Something, yeah. We've been in contact with our, our rep, and now it's, we need to. No offense to Tammy, but does he ask for it to Todd? No, she, no, it's, um, she's taken care of, too.
Yeah.
Our, Todd's. She's.
But Doc, my dad, too, Andrew still is holding a chat, because he had a vague Tyler, and they're aware that we're holding a chat.
I'm getting all two S's. I am, I'm, like, you guys have looked at them last quarter, and that's what I'm starting. Is the hybrid, what, the Korean, what, forty? PM, that you, that you. Did you get that email type of?
I'll have to check, okay?
I have to go sit here, when I set up that correction, can't call it seven, seven eight forty. I'll check it out. Thanks, Phil.
PJ?
So we played the whole South Terry, the, the generation, we couldn't, we couldn't, uh, but we started there, and we, we did it all that way. With the day, we start thinking, something to do, or just, we're, we're starting. It was an hour, and stuff, but, um. We did a, we did a task volume monitoring for the, I said, I was here, somebody, so. There is. Do some blocking, and now I'm feeling fine.
That's it.
Yeah, it is, it really is. It's a lot.
Jim, you're up?
Okay, we got the street baby list on, approximately fourteen, we raised, and five, six, seven, eight. We go, and it was also, uh, mining, industrial, and we started with the thirteen. And like two weeks. But, like, morning, like, all the, all the day. Like, I asked, I'm getting, uh, sort of, early in the family, and started later this week. Pretty long, I think, days, so that, this week. Get recent president in office, quietly, in the state, and, and, like, so, so personally. Keep the baby list in last couple of weeks.
Where are they supposed to start table? Hold on, is that the city?
Yeah.
Hot dog.
Well, my name is Todd, I was, I'm, I want to thank you, Jim, Cruz. I didn't know, uh, what all it is. Just something simple, as you said, the sewer rains, catch basin, across the street into a big yard. But after I watched you guys working on that, and all the different steps, all the different, these, uh, wow. There's a lot I know about, so. We did a hell of a job, with the property owner, Wes. I gotta get this, so you're right. So the best, the, the, Wes. Is a neighbor that owns a property, uh, they could not be more happy. It looks like, uh, landscape, I mean, give you grass operating, and hopefully, things has to go up. It's not a drop of water inside, that's all we're trying to find. We spent, we got a passion for, 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 so I'll stand.
We just, uh, guy did one prior year, Kelly, Kelly, what happened to them? Apparently stripped, with new base, one of the western area. They didn't fly that far, but, America, water, and sand, so.
Yeah.
It's all up there. Um, so, Cruz, uh, everybody, I appreciate that, we, we never have mosquito heaven in the neighborhood. You know, it happens a lot, so, or like the grass, or, 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 or. It looks great, all right, thank you.
Thanks.
Mike Beck, tonight, anything?
No.
Rick, I have a different report tonight, anything?
I have no reporting, so to say. We've got some work to do, and I haven't got to, uh. What I want to bring back to the board is, is more of a final plan for, let me. You know, one of the things that's kind of raised, that's had, is, we want to fix. We want to help ourselves by reducing, uh, especially the west ponds, and, and, to get better algae, at certain times of year. This is one thing. Uh, we need to introduce circulation variation from that pond, and I'm looking at some, but. It's not real expensive, it's not real expensive operating, but it goes a whole long way, using algae duration. I want to bring that back to the board, see, in real sense, what this costs, I don't know. If we do it right, we need to do it two phases at a time. Uh, showing the big believer, before we do something extra, that would be nice to have, we're going to be doing the stuff we need to do, sure. It's not for once, but we do the, this is kind of the highest. What happens basically is the pond water stratifies, which method requires some weight. So the water at the top of pond surface might be seventy-five degrees, and really algae, like in the west business, and down two, three feet, it could be sixty degrees, and if you do that circulating, now you moderate the pressure, you don't have the algae. So that takes less electricity to run that kind of equipment, it would only be a couple of pieces. Or bring that back to the board, that's high piece, so it's hard working on. Operating nicely, but. Any more questions here?
Todd, I think you're up.
And one of the students, you may, you may, why you're up?
Yeah. Look at that one first, I got three resolutions for it.
Yeah.
As well, so. Do those, but, uh, in your package, and, uh, Lisa and I met with Jeremy. Uh, Jordan, is that Jeremy's work? Um, interesting. Last week, and discussed the proposal, and the city has already adopted, or signed their agreement with them, that this is an HR firm, that is a consulting firm, that, um, we will get billed per hour. Uh, as cases come up, and we limited the double contacts unless somebody really has an issue with somebody that that they need to talk to privately. Uh, talked about it, uh, seems like a very, very knowledgeable person. In this field, he has different support groups, or different people that specialize in different fields, in the HR as well. But, um, Alicia, I've been through this, I could do it, and through it, and it just needs to be adopted or approved, so that you it's your signature, so we have a contract. With both. As well.
Now, if, if that would be approval.
Or action. I think we're going to reach, uh, the big, HR's, uh.
We have a motion and second to, to approve and sign the, to only perform agreement with, in big rate, HR. Further discussion, I think, from my standpoint, it's something we've been talking about doing for a long time. And, uh, we're, I've been fortunate over the past, whatever time it's been, that we haven't had something more serious happen, that we've been exposed, this will help our exposure, quite a bit, so. Any other comments or questions?
Do you guys like to see a separate budget online? Or God, if you only got outset services, or attorneys, like, and make it specific. Yeah, like HR, it's all amazing.
Yeah, they wouldn't, they wouldn't have an idea what it's costing, yeah.
Yeah.
All right. We have a motion with second, and we'll have a vote. Rick and?
Aye.
Joe Root?
Aye.
Mike Reeder?
Aye.
Ed Burman?
Aye.
Aye.
We have a better one this morning.
One I can read?
I've got to be someone here, and it's just at the bottom, right there's not, everything else I've got, it's, it's good if you guys.
Watch, watch. Can you read it?
Oh, mine, I can do that.
Yeah. We want it for company?
I could do copies of that one. I'll get a, we'll get one back to Jeremy, and then I'll get a copy that you can put on this.
All right, what's next?
Um, let's go to the resolution, and we'll be, I'll be.
Okay, for the one about Zoom, or for, for time meetings, we've got twenty twenty-one dash oh nine, dash oh seven, dash oh one.
So, basically, what this is, uh, legislature updated the statute regarding electronic meetings. Used to be that you could not vote in an electronic meeting, uh, and it was kind of unclear whether or not you were absent or present. Now, you are present, and you are allowed to vote, as long as you're not specific, um, specific items, like adopting a budget, reducing personnel, things like that, and they're all listed here. Uh, I took the statute and used it to create what we would have to follow. So that all correlates to the statute, but I think it would be a good idea to adopt this, just because it does provide you a little bit more flexibility with regard to attendance in electronic meetings, and you have.
Motion?
So move.
Motion by Mike. Second?
Second.
By Joe. Uh, if either things are happening, it's probably a pretty good idea, so. Roll call.
Three A.
Joe Root?
Aye.
Mike Reeder?
Aye.
Ed Burman?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye. For the, for the, for the, I've got the same negative, it's oh two on the bottom, on the last.
Do you have, we've got to that first one, side hall?
I do not, I have no. Oh, you. It's not, that one's not happening.
Yeah, I've got, like.
The one that I have.
Mine's pretty decent.
I've got one.
I got.
So next thing we. Make sure that Jeremy gives a copy of this.
Right. Yeah. At least I can take a signed copy of me and I'll see how I'll be able to insert a signed copy. Okay, also.
I do have a question. Or a fall. This is. Liaison, is there a board liaison with H R? How do we interact with?
That's a good question. Right now it was with me, but I I do, I can feel that there should be a work. There should be also a little bit of hate on. Because we have, we have them with all other departments. Yeah.
That would also help us. So we all know. You know, if it's, if it's mine.
We didn't have all of that. I'll, I'll build. So I can do.
Yeah.
Need that form of a motion or just do it?
It's just a border point on the chair appointment.
Okay, perfect.
You've got it. Think it's. Flip the two and see if it meets. All right, the COVID protocols.
So you all talked about, um, the city had often adopted, updated quarantine paper calls. And they had some other protocols that they had adopted last year. I also updated those protocols to match what the current CDC regulation for. Their requests are, I guess. Uh, so I added some language just because, uh, this was adopted before people had access. So, uh, if we want changes to that, I'm happy to make them. Uh, but basically what I'm proposing is, uh. Be a language on page one and then adopting the cities and attaching the cities to, uh.
Questions about? The motion?
City, city's document is attached to.
Yes, I got copies from Steve.
So. The cities is what's there's on K.
There on K says.
First.
Um, yeah, that was before I sent the copy with the actual.
I said, I I got it, I got it twice and only the last one, the first one didn't have one.
And then I added, I added this new protocol to it.
Sorry.
Uh, so the city's protocols basically are that if you are vaccinated. Uh, and you have COVID. Uh, you may be eligible for up to ten days if you provide evidence of positive COVID test and proof of the vaccination. If you are unvaccinated, then you would not be eligible for ten days. That's where the city has.
You clarify what you know is, and then.
Uh.
And then.
So if.
If you know it's used.
Yeah.
You can.
Yes, this would be ten. Extra days. Yes, since you'd be eligible. That's what.
One time or multiple times?
Uh, it says ten days, so I assume one time. But it does not really clarify that.
Before, when, would be for some of these things where in the last year with the government came out with ten days. We had somebody that had the warranty or was getting processed during the test. It was a total of ten days, uh, throughout the. The year. So if they had like they went to get a test, the test gave back, you know, they did, it took three days to get the test back. Well, we used three of those ten days.
And that ended the, it used to be required. Um. By the federal government, that ended on the summer thirty first of twenty twenty. Now this would just be extra that you all would be willing to provide and it basically incentivizes people to get vaccinated. You get COVID and you're not vaccinated, you can't get these extra days. Yeah, if you are vaccinated, then you.
And we were in full line with the city.
That is the city's document. So, yes. Yep, that's why I attached the city's document. The only thing that we're not in alignment with the city is that I updated, they have on. Uh, third page. This was adopted in September of twenty twenty. And so I updated that in on page one, uh, to include what happens if you have had a vaccine, which is the CDC recommends that if you've been vaccinated and you're exposed. You can eat with other people. You don't have to quarantine. You just have to wear a mask indoors. If you have not been vaccinated and you are exposed, you're just going to quarantine. Uh, and then if you have a positive test, all of that stuff, um, changes too. So, um, I did update that. We can change that or take it out, whatever you guys want. That's just to line up.
So this actually will go to the employees. Notification from the file.
Yeah, it should, and we can do, um, I don't have it with me, but I have a. Page basically where the employees would sign and say like I, I didn't acknowledge that they would.
Because we used to leave it for when they told you.
Yeah.
Was the.
Yeah.
We've been, um, we've been topics there, their payroll and stuff this week, their funding and stuff, we've been just. Attached to the M O. They might get scotched by fire.
And then. And then if you want, you can assign acknowledgement. That would be a good place to put that.
So.
That's fine.
Don't use it.
That's fine. I have the.
Will that stop?
I didn't acknowledge that. I just didn't. Forget to want, but forgot about it. So it's done. I just need to email it.
Thank you.
Yes.
Twenty twenty one dash oh nine oh seven oh two. You're real.
I will. So move. On second. We have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty one dash oh nine dash oh seven oh two. Additional COVID nineteen protocols with the cities attached with it. Includes attachment of everything that the cities have provided for quarantine pay and procedure. Andrew, let's cover a little.
Great, buddy. Hi, it's Joey.
Hi. Hi.
Hi, here's one company that assigned. And the last one will be twenty twenty one. I didn't get that one.
You didn't get that one. That was.
I didn't get one on the, uh.
That was in my after. That was in my second email.
Oh.
Sorry, I have copies though. See, the ones.
We got copies and we can bring it up to the next. Jeremy.
I think that's copies.
It's over the, uh, recommended condition that will now require it's through the sewer when there are people redoing. Or. Rebuild their towns and stuff, rebuild the sewer life.
So Jim, uh, asked me if we had anything that required people to put in a clean out or we did not in our city ordinance. So this would be in addition to, uh, the city ordinance, which basically requiring that they put in a clean out if they're replacing or they're adding new services. And then Jim provided the specifications. Uh, basically they would have to supply, it would be their expense and they would have to make in a hand, um, preparing if it was. Broken. But it would go up to the. Or to the.
I think fourteen asked to get this.
But you don't have to add another one, so.
Yeah, I'll, I'll say that.
You don't have to, yeah. Ask her.
I, I could play the con. What am I doing today?
Now, does this? Do we intend it? Council on?
Yeah, the council, the city council would have to approve it. I've talked to Liv briefly about it. Again, didn't think there would be any issue, maybe a recommendation to, um, support. This is just a resolution recommending this addition and then there would have to be city ordinance and they have to pass it.
Do they have that? Have some grading or?
I think they said, I, it's not a rating, so we're gonna have that here. But.
They fixed three ratings.
Yeah.
Okay. Is our motion to approve resolution twenty twenty one dash oh nine oh seven. Page three, additional, addition of a clean out requirement for municipal store users. So move. Joe Root. Oops. Say it again. Rick Denny. Whoa, whoa.
Mike Reeder.
Hi.
Rick Denny. Joey. Hi. Kim Bur.
Hi. Here comes this one.
Uh, I'm gonna. Usually what you have to do is take some draft ordinance, so I'll do that this week in good show, so it might be as early as the next meeting.
Okay.
But I'll do it. Yep, to make sure I'll.
I'll bring Jim.
Yeah, um, I will, uh, talk to him tomorrow.
We need to, uh, start working on from when that you. Hookups. Half an hour. Twenty eight. Even right now because we. First six months.
Right.
And that completion date was what? Just the other day.
August thirty first.
August thirty first. Okay, so we have to supply the stuff for the first six months. So once that six months is up, we need to have what it is to cover our costs.
Right, okay. Okay. After that six, after that six months. Cause we, we just had one, uh, week before, no, last week or week before last, right? And so we have what the cost was on that, so we can start putting together.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, Chris too. It's on water.
Alright.
Cost.
Who was reading for this license?
Oh, yeah, you did that already.
Jim and I talked about this, who's working on it, I think, Richard.
So, yeah, so we're already done with this. We just got it.
Yeah. Does that phase without? There are those meter sizes and that things.
Yeah, that was a second, the second thing. Okay.
Anything else? Uh, motion for a discussion of planes.
Question I had. Like asked it about the robot. Second plane.
Second. Hi, Joe. Whoa, whoa.
Great name. Hi. Mike Reeder.
Hi.
Joey. Kim Bur. Hi. Mike.
Hi.
The old business that we want us to discuss. At some general. Business over this. We, we had our. Interfere. And we're looking, we're good right now. Discuss with Ken. The director. Would possibly. Might talk to Todd again. So if they were on board, we're suggesting we have a lot of any. Changes. And nature of this name and basically changes in the. Entry screen. Or step. Couple of. So we have a local enrollment. But we.
Yes, yes.
We, we are. The reason. First. This is where the, so I have a new business. It seems like there are these screening scheduling.
That's what he just, we'll open a romance house to, that's, that's probably back there. No, they're, that, that's what they call it, the hell screen and they call it.
So when, when is that?
Sometime in October, I'll give you a day.
Concrete day, yeah.
Okay.
I think it's at two weeks.
I thought it was longer than that. I thought it was almost. I think.
Four, four weeks.
Yeah. Because the, the number of people trying to get in there in a short period of time, I think they put.
Four. That's it.
Give him his new. Regular position. Like papers.
Which that's what we're trying to put down. So.
Okay. I haven't heard a report about the clinic church for a while. He says they usually do that in insurance. So the, how, how is the clinic doing? Are we meeting some of those goals that we had set? I think. Yeah. They really talk. The cost.
Report that we got last night in the clinic was like there was. There was more. Spouses and children moving.
Would it, would it be possible to have somebody give us a report on the clinic?
We have a. Which is. I'll ask. What's that? My experience. College is probably very scheduled. My.
So Joe, you, and it did have to be the next meeting, just sometime before the end of the year. That's my idea. Other new business, old business? Good at the cause? Motion for adjournments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.